Let's go ahead and open the meeting with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hopefully you all have air conditioner at home. It's one of the reasons we all decided to come in. Okay, we'll go ahead and approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any additions, deletions, or changes? Okay, hearing none. If I could have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Billy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Teacher, staff, community comments? Kelly, you can pop in here if you want.
I'm listening.
Okay, did you have anything you wanted to talk to us about tonight? Because I know you're on vacation. Don't know why you're on the screen.
I was just getting in to see what we were doing about the solar.
I think we're just waiting for the bids to go out and the closing dates and we'll open the bids.
So far, we have received, I mean, we've just received two inquiries, one from Canada and one from Texas, and they haven't responded.
Do we have any bids?
The only bid we have right now won't be Samsung.
Okay, is that in writing, Kelly? I mean, is there, is Samsung's bid in response to what the bid was put out to be? With the specifications on it?
Yeah, they, I mean, they really kind of said what we needed. So they had really been able to first people to put their bid in.
Okay, and when we advertised or when you advertised it, what was the closing date on that?
The closing date was last Monday. I talked to Louis before. I went on vacation knowing that he was going on vacation.
Yep.
And he was going to get the process started. Writing letters to the state saying that we have gone out. And I copied him all of my correspondence that I've had with the two companies, or three companies, actually. Because there was another one from Massachusetts. And none of them had responded or had a bid in. And of course, I haven't been there. I get back on Wednesday.
Okay.
So it's been a little late. I haven't gone.
You're getting back this Wednesday?
I come back, yeah, not tomorrow, but Wednesday.
Short vacation. That's fine. What we'll do is when Louis sits back and you, you can get together along with Chris, open up the bids. Eric or Sarah. I'm saying that because I'm still optimistic, but, and then we'll go from there. Chris, how do you want to handle that? Do you want to have a special meeting for just the solar? If we only have one bid, we really...
We could if you want, yeah. That's like the best thing we can do.
Then we'll, okay, then we can go ahead with that once Louis is back, Kelly. And we can always hold a special meeting and go from there.
Great. Thanks. I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions?
No. I'm here for you if you need me.
Thank you. You can have a life and go enjoy your vacation.
I want to go home now.
Oh, okay. Oh geez. Yeah, not hard to do that lately. Do I have any questions from the community or any other questions?
I wanted to, I wanted to make a comment as a community member.
You're not allowed. You have to switch your hat around, Billy. Are you school board or community?
I'm community right now.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to show my appreciation for our teachers. One of my children did summer school and it was really great. Like she wanted to go back every single day, super engaged. And also, my son's teacher in first grade made an appointment with us two weeks ago. And she actually came to our house today, read a book to him, it's Tegan Way, read a book to him. He read a book to her. And then she had a great conversation with my wife and I and just talked about how important it is to build relationships and trust with students and families. And I mean, I know it goes beyond summer school and beyond Tegan and that all of our teachers are amazing.
Yep.
And I just, I love that my kids get to go to school at Roland Towne. I'm glad I can help serve on this board and keep that going right by.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, great.
I know they're trying, I've heard nothing bad, especially about summer school. Tapestry, people are off the wall on, so it's awesome. I'm hoping maybe next year even, we can do some of the extra little things that I know Proctor's doing, you know.
That's our plan. It's a great program. It's a little more intensive preparation. I think part of the problem this year is, you know, not knowing the Austin staff. It's just going to last minutes. So I think having a relatively normal year, hopefully ahead of us, you know, having people, you know, chance to, you know, some breaks and next summer will be a bit recharge.
And I think not having a remote is going to take a huge burden off the teachers also. So hopefully it'll go a lot better. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on. Old business. Well, that would have been the solar, but that's been taken care of. And again, board members, I'll let you and keep you apprised of that. It can be a special meeting. Doesn't have to be in person. Could be just call in, whatever. Hopefully, because we do have to do something, but we have to have Louis there for the money and where we could take stuff. You did, he, so he will not be on. Well, new business, anybody got any new business to bring up? These size opening of school and we're all, I think you know that we're kind of on hold for that right now. State of Vermont is still not getting back to us with all the questions. Chris is right on top of that. The three chairman and Chris are meeting remotely once a week to be brought up to date on what the state is requiring or asking us to do. Just for parents out there to let you know, no decision has been made, but I can pretty much tell you that masks will be required at least at the beginning of school. We'll have to see how it plays out. There's a tremendous amount of people that have been vaccinated that are still catching this new variant. It's hit my own family, however, it's in Maine, but it has hit my family. I know there are several around the state that have had it, and these are vaccinated people. I do want to say that being vaccinated, they don't seem to have had the problems or hospitalization type that if you weren't vaccinated might bring. But being, seeing how majority of our school in particularly are 12 and under, no vaccinations available for them. I really personally cannot see bringing any type of additional stress on them. I don't want to see one of them get it and have it be really bad or whatever. But this is ongoing and as soon as a final decision is made, Chris will send out the notification to all the parents and let you know what it looks like. But just so that you know, I mean, you can start preparing your kiddos, masks probably will be mandatory in the school, by the school, not the state, at least at the beginning. Anyone have any questions about that? You're welcome to ask Chris. He's the one on top of it. Okay, we'll continue on. Finance, Louis will not, he's on vacation. He won't be in tonight. Did get a rundown from him in your packet. There was a printout. I know he usually likes to tell everybody about it, but, um, our... Hang on, I'll find it, maybe. That's it. He likes to be the one that's telling it. I don't know what I did with it. So it looks like Roland Towne's ending with a surplus of just over $330,000. So we'll discuss that more at the next meeting with Louis. It's not money that is available to us right now to spend, but we'll get in with that with Louis when he comes. I'm trying to think. I think the solar, the last estimate we had on it was, I think, combined. Wasn't it close to 70,000 to fix everything?
No, it was 58, 58.5.
I'm sorry. I forgot you were there, Kelly.
Isn't there, wasn't there two stages of that though?
That we could have, if we could have gotten back to them before Wednesday, we would have gotten a discount. But there was no way we could do that. So I think the 58,000 is the bigger number, correct?
No, it was 35 to do the whole roof.
Right.
And then it was another 17 or something like that to do the converter.
Okay, so it's less than I thought. Okay, so after the bids are open, we can decide what to do. And Louis will be in with us on that to see where we can get the money from. It's a shame it wasn't a little earlier in the season. We could have taken it out of the surplus, but that's the way it is. So Kelly, I'll make sure he, I'm sure he will include you in on that discussion when you open up the bids and everything and then the board meets. You're more than welcome to be on that with our special meeting.
Thank you.
So anyways, it looks good for a while. We thought we might run a deficit this past year. The additional monies that we were able to recoup through the state and federal governments assisted us in a lot of the expenses we had due to COVID. And just so people in the general population know, even though we didn't have, we had a lot of remote days. We had a lot of Wednesdays, of course, were remote, so it wasn't busing every single day. But we still have a minimum we have to pay regardless. So I believe the only money we actually save on a busing contract is for the drivers themselves, correct? And maybe some gas. So we don't save a whole lot by not having to run the buses. But anyways, the extra money we were able to get really helped. It helped us with some of the extra people that we were able to bring in to help offset the COVID requirements. And I'm not sure, Chris, do you have any idea what's going on this year with that?
With COVID funding or?
Right.
Our SRT2 and SRT3 funds are really being used toward the recovery plan. We do have money set aside for expenditures, you know, COVID related, whether it be just assistance with a building base sub or things along those lines. But we're really kind of shifting more and more funds now towards focusing on the three areas that was discussed last week at the GRCSU about the social, emotional, the academic, and the attendance truancy. So that's where a lot of those monies would be kind of diverted to, so.
Well, I hope that the forecast that this new variant will run its course quickly holds out. Otherwise, we're going to be looking at possibly having to get another part timer and if we can find someone to help with either substitutions or for cleaning purposes. And I know if anybody's out there looking for a job, please, there's job opportunities everywhere. You can call the main office at the supervisory union here. And we have openings throughout our district, any number of schools. But please, don't be afraid to speak up and come in. Now, are we going to do, never mind. I'll save this for Friday, Thursday.
Okay.
Okay. So that's how the finances are going. Director's orders. You all got them in the email, the warrants to be signed. I signed them. I did not see anything that I was troubled with. Did anybody have any questions? Nope. Have a motion to approve the warrants.
Make a motion to approve the warrants.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting minutes of July 26th, you also got in your packet. Looking for you to read them, additions, deletions, additions. Tina, did you find anything?
I did. So under the principal's report, it says that Eric contacted the families and kids that did not attend summer school and introduced themselves. I think it was supposed to say Eric contacted the new teachers.
I contacted the parents of the students who didn't show or didn't accept.
The ones that didn't come to summer school.
You did reach out to all the parents?
Oh, yeah. I made several phone calls. Took a couple of days.
Because one parent told me that they have not received any phone call from you. That's why I wasn't sure if that was what it was supposed to be.
Was their child?
I know you had said that you had met with the teachers, the new teachers, all of them.
Oh, yeah. I met with, yeah, I met with all of the new teachers, but the phone calls were to all the kids who were on a list that was given to me by Pam. And they were the folks who either did not agree to come in, didn't want to come in, or didn't respond.
I think it's mainly the summer school list.
Oh, it was just the summer school list?
Yes.
It was like all the families? Because the way it's written, it doesn't, it doesn't say the families and kids that did not attend summer school that were asked to come to summer school.
Yeah, that's who we contacted because we had some students. We didn't, trying to mitigate the loss that we had last year. So I know Eric reached out and tried to get them to come in.
So I think the parent that said that she didn't agree with that was because they hadn't heard from him.
Okay.
But I think it's just the way it was written in the minutes.
Okay.
So maybe it just should be clarified. And then there were just a bunch of, a lot of people's names were misspelled, but it just, and there's like a couple of little typos, but I don't feel like it's necessarily, you still get the idea, so not going to obfuscate.
Going back to the principal's report, Tina, which one, the third bulletin, was where it says that Eric had contacted the family and kids that did not attend summer school and introduced themselves?
Right, but it doesn't differentiate that they, the ones that did not attend summer school that were invited to attend summer.
Okay, okay. Then we can put that in for change.
Well, I think we have to also make sure if that's what Eric said though, it stays. And we've clarified it in an open meeting that that's what it should have been, but we technically should go back and revisit and change.
Okay, no problem.
This is what, is it the record of what he said? So it might just be the fact that Eric, you know, could have clarified or maybe just at the time clarified what it really meant. But we have to be very careful with what we do, with how we edit and change the minutes.
All right. Anything else, Tina?
Tina, real quick with the names, if you would just, because I think it's important for us to make sure we have all the names correct. I think that when Shawna sits down and does these, she doesn't necessarily have those names in front of her, so she does her best with them. And then as Christine looks through them, she may not know all these names as well. So if you want to just send those over or if you figure out a way to go through that, we'll get those corrections made.
I didn't see.
Would that just be easier? I just, I just felt badly going through and like nitpicking little things. But for instance, when I was talking about the eighth grade trip to Washington on P2, it says with Eric and Sherry. I'm pretty sure that Sherry is Sherry Bacelon and she spells it S-H-E-R-I.
Right. So something like that, we can go through and if you want, you know, even prior to me, if you go through and just say, you know, here are the typos or misspellings of names, we can go through that instead of going through list by list if that's easier for you to do, Tina.
Could just send it to her?
Yeah, just to send it to.
And just mention it?
You could just send it to Christine and to Shawna that, you know, here are some names that we have. Because you're right, you know, in terms of, you know, it was misspelled. It should be S-H-E-R-I. It was, you know, but like you said, I think when, go ahead, so.
Okay, so I'll do that later.
Okay. Yeah, the big mistake happened earlier was Shawna doesn't always look at her email. So if you want to send it to both Christine and Shawna, the chances of them catching it or catching your changes are easier.
That's fine. She did email me back later and told me that she uses a different email. So I can email her that way.
Okay, awesome.
I did, I just wanted to clarify. The meeting minutes, I believe, are they required to be posted in a certain amount of time?
Yes, we should be posting five days. I reviewed that with Shawna the other day to make sure that we are getting these posted up to date. Zoe, yeah?
Thank you. It's just, I've had a parent contact me and ask me for them. So I just wanted to make sure that that was in fact what was supposed to happen.
Parents can always reach out to Christine McGinnis and she will, you know, be happy to provide them with a copy of the minutes as well.
Awesome. I'll let them, I'll let them know that if I ever get more questions. Thanks.
And the parents are more than welcome to attend meetings too, so.
Do we have any other corrections, additions? So it was noted that the, it alluded to the fact that Eric had touched base with the list that he was given for summer school. It was by no means every parent at the school system. Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chris?
Thanks, Lynn. I know it's only been two weeks since the last meeting. I was not at the last meeting. I apologize for missing that.
Oh, yeah. Shame on you for taking a vacation.
I guess any vacation is a good vacation, right?
Yep.
So I have a couple of things just to kind of review. Last month's GRCSU board meeting, Lisa Madison presented a copy of the recovery plan. That is in your board packets for your review. The recovery plan is on our website. The slides that she presented are there for you to look at. Basically, it's going to be an overview of just the different steps and some of our findings and some of the things we're going to be doing next steps as well. The recovery plan, it's on the website. Lot more detail, a little bit cleaner for the user. But if there's any questions about that, please just let myself or Lisa know. I'm going to have to elaborate as best, well, as best I can. Lisa does a very nice job of explaining the intricacies of this plan. The question that we always ask is about community inputs and moving forward. We will be seeking community inputs, you know, stakeholder input as we progress through this. As we said, this plan was developed last spring into the summer. So obviously, as we move into the school year and we really kind of get a better understanding of where our kids are at from a social, emotional standpoint, we look at attendance, truancy, as well as academics, we can then start to kind of, you know, adjust or, you know, the plan accordingly. And like I said, we have monies available through the SRT2 and the RSR3 funds for that. So, and all the money will be going toward, back towards the kids to make sure that they're where they need to be and when they're, you know, receive the best education possible, we're taking care of them. So, but like I said, it is a, it's a working document. There will be changes. And we will be providing quarterly updates as they get to GRCSU meeting and whatever's presented to GRCSU and then we'll be, you know, give it to local boards for their review as well. The next big thing that is just Governor Scott's press conference last Tuesday, as most are aware, as he alluded to the, what the reopening of schools would potentially may look like. And he touched upon, obviously, the big question was about masks, are people going to be wearing masks or no masks. Well, and the commissioner of health, Dr. Levine, Secretary French, Governor Scott have all have recommended that masks are already worn in schools, at least for the first 10 days. And then you heard say that after 10 days, they would look at it to the 80% eligibility of, 80% of the students are eligible to receive the vaccines and then they could reassess. There were a lot of questions that were asked last week at the superintendent's meeting with Secretary French with regard to how would we be able to get that information, what it would look like. We're still waiting on, you know, some more feedback from the state in terms of how best to, I guess, you know, collect that information so we can really see how many of our students are, you know, eligible for vaccine, how they are fully vaccinated. We do know obviously that the younger population, the kids 12 and under, still do not have access to a vaccine. There was a mention that they're hopeful that by, you know, mid-September, end of September, that Pfizer would have an emergency authorization. We, you know, heard the other day that now that may push back. So it really is a day-to-day, you know, saga in terms of where we're at with this. But we will have an updated plan by the end of this week. And I know that as Lynn had alluded to, last year, as we were entering the school, we were basically asked to re-engineer the school. We were, you know, there were a lot of new things with physical distancing, with the, you know, air quality, with just with masks and just with everything we were doing. It was completely new. This year, really, the main thing is just, you know, centered around masks. Whether or not students and staff we asked to wear masks. And like I said, as a parent, I'm fully expecting my daughter, who's 11, who lives up in the Middle Bear, to be starting the school year off in masks. And I think, you know, the same expectation for us as well. I did have a conversation with a parent today and they were, you know, and I know this is a, people feel very strongly on both sides of this about whether to wear masks or not to wear masks. And as a taxpayer, as a community member of Ron, I also know that last spring that people received a vaccine and we said, hey, we hit the 80% threshold that, hey, we thought things were going to get back to normal. And here we are, you know, kind of dealing with the same sort of issues. But we are looking at a little bit different than what we were doing last spring. We do have a Delta variant that we're still trying to figure out. And as I always say, that I'm, I feel very strong in my educational decisions. I feel very comfortable with those. But when we look at masks, we're around the health and safety. This is where I, it's beyond my purview, beyond my knowledge base. And I really have to defer to, to experts. As I said, in this case, we, you know, last year, we followed the Department of Health, the recommendation of, you know, pressure of health, Dr. Levine. And I think it makes sense for us to continue with that, at least to get us through this first part and then kind of see where we're at with the Delta variant. But, and I know that's not popular, but at the same time, if it was a decision that was being based just upon my daughter, I feel comfortable. But when I'm trying to make a decision based upon everyone's kids, that's where I feel a little less comfortable. Therefore, I think, you know, as I spoke with, you know, Lynn and the other board chairs the other day, I think in that case, we do want to err on the side of health and safety as opposed to taking a risk with the safety. And my report also just talks a little about the GRCSU admin retreats and some of the things we talked about, some of our folks around instructional leadership, faculty and growth, and some of the things. It was a good week. You know, like I said, we got an opportunity to, you know, to meet Eric and get to know Eric. But I think Roland Towne's very lucky to have Eric working with Sarah. It's going to be a great year, so. So if you have any questions about any of that, feel free.
Anyone have a question for Chris? Hearing none. We'll move on. Eric, principal's report?
Yes. So I have just a couple of things. We had a great turnout for Summer Academy and extended year program and Tapestry. It's, they were amazing. Teachers were amazing. Kids were amazing. They wanted to be in school. They wanted to be there. It really was a lot of fun. Tapestry ends up, is closing out this week, so we're going to be missing them soon. Our enrollment numbers are 353, pre-K 24, kindergarten 35, first 30, second 45, third 36, fourth 25, fifth 43. It's a big bubble. Sixth 35, seventh 37, and eighth 43. We're still looking to hire a special education teacher. We do have, we do have interviews coming up, I believe. We're looking for a long-term sub and a special education teacher and a building base substitute. So we are hiring. We are looking to hire staff for our after-school Tapestry program. It's a great program. It really is. If you're interested in getting into teaching, this is the place to go. It's really fun. Works a lot of kids. Food service, Sarah and I met with Kim Babcock and we've designed a plan of action to address the additional food for students who need it most. What we're going to do is ask our lunch duty teachers, who'll be the same ones over and over again, to really, you know, they know who the kids are hungry. We know our kids. To look for those who are hungry and encourage them to eat their fruits and vegetables, but also allow them to go up and get a second entree if they're hungry. Kim Babcock said that she could, the lunch staff can enter in a second entree as a Mr. Guest. So we can have a tabulation of the number of entries charged and we can create that and have a printout for us to take a look at before October 11th. And we already have a meeting, sorry, we set up a time to talk about setting up a meeting before the October 11th school board meeting to get those numbers to you.
Awesome.
Some of the building matters I'm not as familiar with as I should, but we have some cleanouts coming for sewer cleanout mid-August. We have some radon testing August 11th through 13th. We have the fire extinguisher inspections just happened the other day. Life, life safety testing with the communication alarms happening towards the end of the month. A new dishwasher being installed end of August. The solar project, we've kind of briefly talked about. Stormwater, again, I'm not so familiar with it, but kind of covered it last time. We have, from what I understand, Brian is not able to do any more paving, but Kelly's going to get some quotes for paving the basketball courts. And I'm sorry, it's just extra stuff that came in. And I'm sorry, it's just extra stuff that came in. And we did receive your email, Lynette, about the, the cleanout around the generators, so we'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
And from what I understand, we believe the town was taking care of it, but it's ours, so we'll, we'll own what we did not do.
Okay, no problem. Like I said, I didn't know that either, so no problem.
Some upcoming dates, the GRCSU in-service will be on Monday, the 30th, August 30th. We do have back-to-school night, we are doing that. We're doing it a little bit different because of potential COVID-19 restrictions, again, potential. We're not going to meet in the gymnasium as a collective group, but we're gonna have staggered families come in, so staggered names. So last name A through J will come in between 6:00 and 6:25, they'll go right to their teaching room. And then last names K through Z, between 6:30 and 6:55. We'll have them come in and then go straight to the room.
That I have a question on, if I could. Chris, because we're pretty much entering this year like a little worse than we were when we ended school, per se, I'm a little leery on letting anybody except staff into the school. Basically, I think because of the COVID, because of the risk of passing the new variant, I think it should remain the way it is, on, pretty much on a lockdown. Masks required in the school. I don't want to get right up to the day before or whatever, and then we have to do a huge, massive cleaning because we had all these people in. So I'm just gonna throw that out there and let you guys discuss that.
That, that's one of the things we're waiting for further clarification on, about the visitors in schools. It was explained that visitors would still be allowed in schools, but at what level? Because I know that when you look at fall sports, you know, most of them are outside, but when we volleyball indoors and when we have spectators.
Basketball, we're coming into that.
So, right, we're looking at what an open house could potentially look like. So if there are adjustments, obviously, you know, the building administrators will know by this week, and we'll have to make some adjustments as, as we see fit, based upon what we can and can't do. But if it is, you know, like I said, the board wishes that, right now, tonight, we just, instead of, we would like to, you know, to shift that, and we can still make that decision.
Okay.
Prior to the, to the recommendations from the state.
Okay, that's awesome. I just, like I said, I'm just worried about the littler kids. So, you know, I think it's great that maybe we can have back-to-school night, but I'm still just a little nervous about spreading of germs or whatever.
And that's why we were thinking that, to split, it would be fewer people in the building, but I definitely see where you're coming from.
Okay.
Maybe what we'll do is wait to, until passing this information out to parents, wait until Friday, get more direction. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, and I think, well, I think we'll know more on Friday than what may, when Sarah gets back next week, maybe Sarah sits down and discusses like what it might look like, make some adjustments. I think that's the biggest thing, is just, you know, being flexible.
Mm-hmm.
Because while I do believe that, you know, there members of the state who want to kind of just get back to normal, but like I said, we still have to be somewhat responsible because people still have to wear masks, and, you know, you have people coming in from all, you know, like I said, are we just willing to expose, what are we looking to do? Or do we even hold back a back-to-school night a little bit later, hold it a little bit later in the year?
It's just a tough thing, because, I mean, right now, it's great if you're vaccinated, but we really can't even count that as, you know, for one thing, people don't have to tell us, but even if they were all vaccinated, doesn't mean they're not carrying the new variant. I just worry, we're in a, you know, high school, high schools, I think, have it a little easier because most, all of their staff or their students are of the age they can get vaccinated. The majority of our students cannot get vaccinated. So when the state is talking, if 80% of your qualified people are vaccinated, which in us would mean maybe the seventh and eighth grade, even if they were all vaccinated, and suppose they don't have to wear their masks, still the mass majority of our students are vulnerable. So I'm just a little worried about that. And believe me, if anybody knows me, knows that I hate masks, so I am not out there ringing the bell for masks, but I, I am out there ringing the bell for the health of the little kids. So great, I just, you know, and I great, I'm, I'm really glad that we're looking at doing this. I just don't want anyone out there mad because we have to change it. So just as long as people understand that this is something that's in motion, that's fine. And I'm sorry to interrupt you, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, hi.
Hello. I have a couple comments. I completely agree with you, Lynette. I think that the fact that we're asking everyone to wear masks again, and then having, you know, 150 kids, and then their parents and whatnot, all in the school at the same time, it does sound a little risky. I, you know, things are better, but they're not, we're asking everyone to wear masks and asking everyone to come to the school, it just, I think, sends a mixed message. I think maybe looking at a virtual back-to-school night option might be a safer idea. And then, secondly, if you do go ahead with it, I really don't think five minutes is enough time to let one group leave the parking lot and the other group come. I think there should be at least a 15-minute gap, because people are going to come early to get their parking spot, and I think it's gonna be really difficult to get everybody out in five minutes, and then the other group can in five minutes.
Plus, plus, like I said, it says families, so I assume that you are saying parents with their children?
That was the, the assumption.
Okay, um, yeah, yeah. I just, you know, you, you hear us, you understand, I'm sure. So nothing's set in stone. It will be nice, but, you know, jeez, you can always, maybe we can grab the camera that we use for games, and you can go around and all the teachers can just.
Look at some options.
Okay, great, great, that's all.
And like you said, you could do a virtual, maybe back-to-school, or back-to-school night, and then do an open house later, and just do it by grade.
Yeah.
So, and then you could stagger it that way, or like a couple grades a night or something, and stagger it with, you know, time-wise with ages, and then there's less people, but they still get to physically come in. Might be another option, too.
Any questions for us, Eric?
No.
And I'm hearing wonderful things about you, just to let you know. You don't see me up there.
I'm sorry, I also made, wanted to make the comment that I really liked the report. I liked how much information was in it and the layout, it was really nice.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else for principal's report?
Just a question on the supervisory union. How is that gonna be handled this year? Is everybody at their own school, or is you gathering all the staff together?
Of the GRCSU, it'll, no, we will not be one large group, it'll be done remotely.
Everybody will be at their own school.
We just thought, just moving forward, even in a good year, it just makes more sense for us, just not to waste money on a large conference room, and just, people could be in the buildings where they need to be, doing building-based things, and we can do a large group, you know, meeting if we really need to, but then they could break up, so it will not be done as in use pass where, visit the Holly End or somewhere else. So I think that's kind of, it's, you know, past now.
Anything else?
Thanks for clarifying that, Jeff.
Personnel, contract recommendations, you've got a list that, the new list, professional staff, there are actually three on it, just so you're on the right page. We can break this down. Professional staff, we have three. All three of these staff members are doing a horizontal movement on the pay scale, so there's no new hiring or anything, it's just due to educational credits or whatever. First one is Megan Marrow, Colby Huskott, and Marissa Keyfever, Keyfavor, I always say that wrong. Do I have any questions on those? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the professional staff?
I'll make a motion to approve the professional staff.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Moving on, extracurriculum. This will be some of our coaches. We have Amanda Carmichael, cross-country coach. We have Marissa Keyfavor, the girls' soccer coach, and Corey Pollock for the boys' soccer coach. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the extracurricular.
Any more discussion, or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the last one would be our PLC leaders, same stipend that they got last year, and it would be Colby, sorry, Colby Huskott, Michael Rowe, Megan Marrow, Teagan Wait, and Catherine Dugay. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the stipends for PLC leaders.
Okay, got it. Any discussion?
Can I just say that those folks have been in the building almost as much as I had this summer?
That's awesome.
They really have.
That's awesome.
I was kicking Catherine out today, like, go home, son.
Yeah, really. Relax while you can.
It's almost ridiculous the amount of hours they put in the building.
That is awesome. And, and Sarah, and you bringing up what they actually do, being a part of the GURCU, you hear different things from all the different schools. So actually being able to understand what our school does, and what our PLC leaders mean, and what their responsibilities and duties are, really helped settle our angst down, and I really appreciate everything that you guys have done for that. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on. Drivers' ed policy. I don't have anything. Everything I, and typically I don't, because if I have anything, I say it throughout the Next chairman might be able to hold on to the schedule. Policies, driver education policy you have in front of you, the changes have been made. And it does say, the most important part was reimbursement is up to 400 upon receipt. This has been warned three times now. Do I have a motion to accept policy code F61, drivers' education for Rutland Town students?
Make a motion to accept.
Okay. Tina, Tina, I'm gonna give it to you, because you haven't made one yet.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't know why I asked that, I already hear everybody. Okay, next meeting coming up will be September 13th, and again, that'll be at 6 o'clock. We are doing both remote and in-person here. And please, parents, if you want to attend the meeting, come on in, we have plenty of room. And again, this is open to changes, but right now, we do not require masks unless you feel you want to wear one. And then on September 21st, the school board has a program to be put on by Susan.
Yeah, it's a board workshop by Susan Holson, who's the Director of Education for the Vermont School Board Association, so.
Okay, and we can do that, she want that in person, I can have.
She would like it to be in person, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we will do it at the SU, so on the 21st, 6 o'clock?
Actually, we had 5 o'clock.
Oh, 5 o'clock? Oh, there goes supper.
If you look to 6, I can just think of that.
That's fine, that's fine, for 5 o'clock. I don't think we really pin that down because barely.
Order supper if you want, I'm here for. So, and this will be around board members, roles and responsibilities, governance, you know, ethics, you know, just, so Susan presented to the Corey Valley Board last week, just last week, and I think it was just a lot of great information, it was a good discussion, so.
Now, are we going to do this both remote or just in person?
We will still, it'll be in person, but we'll still have a remote link.
So if somebody wanted to listen.
It is a public meeting, since we are, even though no actions will be taken this meeting, but still it'll be just public wants to tune in, to see, they can view, but there will be no public comments or section for that.
And it really might be very educational for residents, parents out there, that for some reason, it seems people think we have a lot more power to do things than we actually do in our actual responsibilities. So it might be a very educational thing for people to listen to. Anybody have any comments on that? Thank you all for getting back to me on that, so we could pin down the date. Executive session, I don't have anything. So now we're at the end. I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
It just doesn't sound right if I do it. Any other meeting, I'm usually the first one, make a motion. Any discussion on adjournment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, wow, guys, 6:45.